Welcome, everybody, to our regular meeting, La Sourd City Council meeting dated May 23, 2020. This time I'll call the meeting's order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, clear and just. You've all been presented with your agendas this late last week. You have an opportunity to look at them more. This time I will entertain the motions to accept the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Beginning our meeting tonight, we will begin with a presentation from Hometown Bioenergy. At this time, I will allow our council representative with MMP to introduce them. So, Mr. Krogman.
Thank you. This evening, we have with us the folks from MMPA Avant. Avant is the management company for MMPA. MMPA, of course, being Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. We're part of one of 12 cities that are part of MMPA. Derek Dolan is with us this evening to make a presentation about, we'll call it, economic changes that are going to occur at the bio gas or Hometown Bioenergy. We're thankful that he's here and we thank MMPA for coming to explain to us what they're going to do.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you. Councilman Krogman had requested that we come here. This is an issue that has been before the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Agency Board, and it affects the plant here, obviously, in La Sourd, Hometown Bioenergy. I have with me tonight Anju Air, who is MMPA's Chief Operating Officer, John Fahay, who is, he's getting faded. It's, Anju's been trying to pronounce your name all night, so I got it wrong. Who is the plant manager. And Keith, who is from East Grand Forks, who is a council or a MMPA Board Representative from East Grand Forks, who decided since he was in town, he would watch this happen here tonight. So, he's here as well. And as Noel said, Avant provides management services to MMPA and to Hometown Bioenergy. What we have is we have an opportunity to improve the economics of the plant at Hometown Bioenergy by converting the biogas that we make today, which is a result of animal feed digestion. Biogas contains both methane and carbon dioxide. What we're going to do is remove the carbon dioxide. What that means, then, the methane is worth more and we can inject it into the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline. And in so doing, we can create about $4.5 million value. That value then gets shared between MMPA members, of which La Sourd is one, and La Sourd is significantly probably the fifth largest member of the 12 members of MMPA. So, it's not a significant lot of money. And what I want to show you here, whoops, voice is fast. There we go. This is an aerial view of the plant. And these three vessels here, these are the big balloons, as you might call them, that are the gas storage vessels. These are the two digesters. Processing takes place in here. And over here, these are the lagoons that are covered that take the material that's produced, which is then later land applies on about 3,000 acres of farmland here in the La Sourd area. What we intend to do is to remove this gas storage vessel and install equipment that will be not nearly as large, that will do that separation of carbon dioxide from the methane. And that's the only change that will be visible in all this. There are some changes to electrical connections and that sort of thing. But that's all that there is there. And then what we will do, this is the plan again, is construct a pipeline that will go along this route up to the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline here. Whether, this is also called the Town Border Station for La Sourd. And so, Center Point has a tap there, as well as does Greater Minnesota Gas. And actually, we're going to have Greater Minnesota Gas build this and operate this pipeline, since we don't do those kinds of things. You folks, I'm sure, are familiar with them, as they have their roots here in La Sourd. I'm going to go back one, go see how well I can do on this. You can take a throwback, that'd be great. What we're going to install at this location right here is a gas compressor, and that gas compressor will push the methane through a membrane, leaving the carbon dioxide behind. That's the main equipment that will use electricity and make some amount of noise, but not any significant amount of noise. It's a screw compressor, so it isn't a bang, 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 bang kind of thing. And then up at the other end, we will also have another compressor that will take it and move it up to the pressures that are necessary in order to inject it into the pipeline. And then, if I can operate this this time, then the tap that is going to be done up here, as I said, there will be a compressor there, that tap will be done by Northern Natural Gas. So, we will have contractors doing work down here in Greater Minnesota Gas constructing this and Northern Natural Gas through the tap. There will be no increase in plant capacity. We will process the same amount of feedstock as we are today. And the only permits required for this project are land use permits that Greater Minnesota Gas has already obtained from La Sourd County for the use of its right-of-way. And most of this will be in the right-of-way. They're also buying some landowners, because construction would be somewhat easier if it were on private right-of-way. The changes that will take occurs as a result of this, MMPA, Hometown Bioenergy, will be buying more electricity from La Sourd than it does today, because we're going to make less electricity, because it's worth more to make it as renewable natural gas. And so, MMPA will become a customer of well between 750 kilowatts and 1,000 kilowatts. Today, purchases are really occasional, when the plant does not have its generators running, which happens very seldom. So, that basically is a project, we think, a minimal impact kind of a project, but it has a significant economic value. But I'm here to stand for it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll ask some questions on behalf of the council. If I could, Derek, could you explain, you use the term "feedstock", what is being brought in to be processed? It's also called bio gas. Would you explain this? Everybody's on the same understanding?
We bring in a significant amount of corn silage from the corn canning process, which used to occur here in this town, so you are pretty familiar with that. And then we bring in, that's about half of the feedstock for the plant. We bring that in from two different places, Montgomery Seneca Foods, Lakeside Foods, over in Owatonna, actually. We then bring in food processing waste from a lot of plants. Genuo turkey plants all over the place, potato processing plants. We use no manures. We use some to get the thing started, because they have the microbes you're looking for to accomplish this process. But it's essentially all food processing wastes.
Now, you've sort of answered this before, but for clarity, will there be any increase in input of bio matter to the facility?
Not as a result of this, no.
And how about truck traffic? Will there be a change in truck traffic?
No, it's the same truck traffic.
Couple of other questions, then. The product that you produce is called RNG, is that correct?
Yes, renewable natural gas.
Okay, and that basically can be used just like a natural gas?
Yes.
Okay. Will any of that be transported in any way other than through the pipeline?
No.
Will there still be electrical power produced in Hometown Bioenergy, this plant, or distribution to the grid?
Only at times when prices are very, very high. So, this is an economic choice. If prices are higher for electricity produced, we'll produce it. Otherwise, we'll sell it as renewable.
Now, you're producing methane, so the next question is, what will be done to ensure that methane is fully contained and kept from the atmosphere?
Well, those are the practices that we engage in today. Methane, obviously, has a lot of value for us, and so we have a system of collecting it. Okay, and I'll just use the pointer. So, these are the two digestors where the biogas, which is mostly methane, is produced. This material is conducted by a pipeline to this gas cleaner here, okay, which removes hydrogen sulfide, which is something stinks. And then after that cleanup today, it's put into these bubbles, and then it's brought back over here where the generators are. We don't have any place where there's a release of natural gas in that biogas.
Related to that, then, is, are there any additional, are there any safety risks producing the methane that would be anything different from what's there right now?
No.
And finally, this one is probably going to be asked by the public in general, so I'll ask it. What special training and equipment, if any, will La Sourd and area fire departments, police departments, for example, also need based on the production of methane? Is there anything additional, like getting more trained?
I think it's the same training that they've had already. And I know over the nine years that the plant has been active, that that training has taken place on several occasions. And tours have been conducted as well for both council people and for first responders, just to keep people familiar with the plant as new people change.
I'm going to ask you this one question, and certainly, Mr. Mayor, other members of the council may have questions. But would you, again, recap what the economic development, excuse me, the economic benefit will be to La Sourd? You've mentioned a couple of things, but it may not hurt to have a summary of that.
So, the first economic benefit relates to MMPA's cost and La Sourd's portion of both costs. Those get charged through rates, okay? But that's of that $4.5 million, you would see some benefit there. The second benefit is you'll have a customer for between 750 and 1,000 kilowatts. And so, that's a significant one. And then, the other benefit that the community has, especially these times of high fertilizer prices, is we're fertilizing something on the order of 3,000 acres a year. With what is really a high-quality fertilizer, it's all plowed in. We work diligently to reduce orders and those kinds of things. But that's another benefit to farmers in the area, to the community.
Well, I thank you for answering the questions. These questions, if I remember, all council members, I did ask, these are very similar questions as the board at MMPA consider going forward, so that other members of the MMPA would be aware of the impact on La Sourd. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to ask those questions.
Again, what's your name again, sir? Derek Dolan. Derek, we appreciate you, your time here tonight and forming us on your projects with Hometown Bio. I think as we move forward in the future, any type of communication you can share with us for this project would be welcome. I just think the public perception of this plant over the years is we've struggled with it, you know? And I think the public relations side of things, I think the more this is communicated, it would benefit not only us, but it would benefit your project also. But, no, thank you. I really appreciate your information. Anybody else?
I just do have a comment about pipeline training, safety, and perhaps a pipeline entity that's going to put this in can work with the local fire department. I know in the past I have attended a pipeline training session. It was in St. Peter. I don't remember what pipeline was going in, but there was a big training session. So, I think it would be beneficial to communicate with that pipeline actually to work with our local safety.
We'll encourage them to do so, and I believe that they're accustomed to doing so already. Greater Minnesota Gas will construct it and operate it, and MMPA will be the provider of capital for that project, and that's the basic involvement. Timeline on this project? That's a great question. We think it's for the end of the first quarter or second quarter of next year. We were more optimistic earlier. Supply chain things have been very difficult for all sorts of projects. And we believe that we have our costs fairly well controlled right now, or fairly managed, and that we have executed contracts for equipment for the pipeline tap and also for the pipeline. So, the only thing that we're exposed on right now is contractor costs for installation. One last quick question. When was that constructed out there? It became active in 2013. Anybody else? Derek, again, I want to thank you for your time and your presentation, and we wish you well with your projects. Great. Thank you for the opportunity. Moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda routine have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. Items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. This time, I will ask our city administrator to review these others, if he would please.
Speaking of Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight's consent agenda, we have approving city council minutes from the May 9th, 2022 regular meeting, approving disbursements through today, approving gambling exempt permits, those for law handling exempt permits for Giant Days, the Giant Day Celebration Committee, and for St. Anne's Church for Apple Fest. Item D, approving Main Street closures request. This is for the La Sourd Chamber, having three different Summer in the Valley events down on the New South Main. Item E, approving temporary on sale winter license application. This is for Giant Days. Item F, approving updated MRBT lease agreement. Just a couple notes on this. This is Minnesota River Valley Transit. So, the Minnesota River Valley Transit, MRBT leases space at City Strike Services building as it has for several years now. The state has now required that MRBT have an updated contract that has a defined termination date. The current contract does not have a termination date. So, MRBT has proposed an updated contract with two changes to it. One is a termination date at the end of 2026, at which point we could revisit this with MRBT. And the second is an increase to the monthly lease payment that MRBT currently pays to the city, a little over $150 a month, creating a little over $2,000 a year additional MRBT to the city.
I have to replant that on that one.
Yeah.
So, we actually discussed this at the transit meeting two weeks ago. Specifically, the numbers on the lease agreement part of that is exactly the same as we're paying St. Peter for their square footage.
Correct.
So, it was based on a number, square footage was, across the board, which prior to this, I don't think it was equal. I think they were actually paying more.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for adding that. So, we're, this is an increase, and it's a little bit more than I could have all. So, those two items, again, the defined termination date and the increase to monthly lease payment that the state receives for face in the joint service. Item G is the approval of Council 36 electric conversion to AstroJohn. And item H, a couple personnel actions tonight, very seasonal staff member, and two new members toward fire departments, which will bring our target group back up to 24 members. If you recall, there was, there have been two retirements in the last several months here, and we're proposing a area of tuning members.
Okay. Any questions on the consent agenda for the city administrator? If not, I will entertain any motions to accept the consent agenda. To move, thank you, Member Krogman, Member Schleter seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. We'll be on a public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make comments must sign in advance of the meeting on a sheet provided and define themselves by writing their names and addresses, council members, swamber. We have Michael Feld. We'd like to step up for La Sourd Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to introduce myself, frankly. About a month ago, this council gave its consent and approval for my employment as a full-time peace officer. Wanted to extend my thanks and gratitude for this opportunity. And I was hired as a part-time peace officer about a year and a half ago. And in that time, I have learned to really, you know, get a strong feel for this community. And I've got almost now 23 years of law enforcement experience, ranging from smaller than this community to large metro departments. And it's nice to get back to my roots a little bit. So, I wanted to put a face to the name. I'm sure you guys see names come across all the time, and I wanted you guys to know that, you know, this is who I am. So, when you see the new bald guy walking around, not to be, you know, confused with the other bald guys. But again, I just wanted to give my thanks to this council for the opportunity. And I am horrible with names, so if I don't write it down, it's the worst for me. But as I get a chance to work and see everybody out in the town or in official business, please feel free to step up to me and reintroduce yourself if it looks like I had a loss. But again, I want to thank you for the opportunity. And if anybody has any questions about me before I let you finish out your evening, I'd be more than happy to entertain.
Officer Feld, thank you for sharing your comments with us tonight. Welcome to the panel. We're excited to have you as part of our community, and we're delighted to have you here tonight. So, anybody else have anything? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. City administrator update, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that I have been mulling over for some time. We can try and help the council, who says they would rather not see item seven going forward. That's perfectly fine. Since the city administrator has historically not had any time at the city council's regular meetings to provide just a general update on business, I thought it might be helpful, I can provide some updates on some things that might not necessarily make the agenda, but might be important for council to hear. So, again, this is your agenda, not mine, but I did throw this out here.
So, thank you. And that's why I missed it, because it's new. Yes, thank you. Also requested. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to say a couple things. It's been a busy month or so around City Hall. The 36th project continues to move forward and go well. Stage 1A, which is the intersection of South Main and Ferry Street, is reopened as of today, which is on schedule, which we're all thrilled about. There's still completing some work in the eastern curving sidewalk work around there, but you can now access South Main from Ferry Street and by first said, which is successful. The weather has helped out a lot with that. From a staffing standpoint, we see some, the new hire tonight, we're very excited to have two members to our fire department. We had more than two applicants, so we, like a lot of service organizations, volunteer organizations around the country, we are part of, and we've seen growth and a lot of excitement, which we're thrilled about. I would also just like to publicly extend my thanks to the team from MMPA. We're no longer here to give my little thanks, but I'll call that. For coming out tonight, I really appreciate their time stepping forth and having a conversation with council about what their plans are for Hometown Bio. Several people, including councilmember Swamber, who asked me about where the meeting, I've seen the signs for disclosure of Highway 93 for a couple of days later this week. As part of the Council 36 project, there's an awareness that there was an opportunity to improve the sightline looking west as you're heading north on the new South Main. Okay, looking down underneath the railroad trestle to traffic that's coming into town uphill. As part of that broader project, we have the chance to modify the slope of that hillside a little bit to re-brake, do a little bit of re-brading, and change the landscaping there to improve the line of sight, understanding that traffic isn't necessarily always traveling at just 30 miles an hour coming up that hill. And an awareness that it's ideal if you don't have traffic creeping out into that intersection to get a good line of sight. So, there'll be some work going on there on 93, ultimately, in the interest of public safety. As you can tell from the rest of the council chambers here, we have an election tomorrow's election day. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow and through 8:00 p.m., and that is for the primary for Congressional District 1. So, the seat formerly home, formerly held by Jim Haggdorn, which was vacated by his death earlier this year. There's a primary tomorrow for that, Eric City Hall. It's a little bit confusing, understandably, because after the general election, La Sourd will no longer be represented by Congressional District 1. But we are right now and will be until the general election, so we will be participating in the primary. The general election for Congressional District 1 will be held in August, the normal primary election. It's very confusing, but election day here tomorrow, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, thanks also to city staff and all those who volunteered to be election judges to make our elections go off the hitch. This is a big election year, not only now, but the primary in August and then the general election in November. So, we have a lot of elections coming up. It takes a lot of staff time, a lot of volunteer time to make these go off smoothly in partnership with the county. So, I want to thank everyone involved with that, Stacy and Jackie in particular, putting in a lot of extra hours and time to make sure that tomorrow and all of our elections go smoothly. That's all I have for today, so thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. I appreciate the updates, Mr. Roby, and also the civics lesson. So, circling back a little, a gentleman just walked in. Were you going to address the council?
I would.
Name, please?
John Hart.
John, if you want to step up in the podium, you missed the public comment. In the future, if you'd like to address the council, I'd recommend you be here on time. So, we're going to give you five minutes, and we appreciate any comments you want to share with us, as long as they don't get personal. Over. We would like to listen.
All right. I guess I just, I would like, from the council, or some governing body that can put, answer questions as to what some property in town, specifically, I'm speaking of mine, and stuff below the trestle. And I also would like clarification on what are roads and what are reasons. I would say, I guess I, it doesn't need to be in a meeting, but I'd like to have that. Like, knowing that I would like to talk to somebody that can give me some straight answers and shoot straight with me. That's what I would like.
Very good. Well, if somebody, why don't you contact City Hall tomorrow and they'll work with you on that?
Okay.
Anything else that's clear?
Work, Joe?
Absolutely. Mr. Hart and I have had several conversations in the last several weeks, along with Chi Tiki and Building Official Nielsen. And.
And they'll, they'll, they'll review the ordinances with you and go over all that with you, so, okay? Thank you, Mr. Hart, you have a good night. City administrator update, thank you again for that, Joseph. Regular agenda, we'll move on to the regular agenda items. The first one on the regular agenda item is the conditional use permit for four divisions. You want to review this for Mr. Ruby?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and actually we have. John, individual, Mr. John Henry here tonight from taking storage group. So taking storage group owns the self storage units on. Four hundred division street to division Dakota Street, Fort Street. They applied for a conditional use permit to allow expansion of that facility to add an additional six buildings to its current four buildings that currently reside on that personal. The planning commission held a public hearing last week to review plans and discuss the conditions under which this permit would be granted. On the planning commission, I asked a lot of good questions, good discussion. And ultimately, I would recommend that this city council with a recommendation to approve the conditional use permit. I don't have all the items here in the presentation, but there are a series of conditions under which this would be allowed, all of which would be. All throughout the building, building guidelines, so things like landscaping, landscaping requirements, there'd be an additional. Ingress egress off of Dakota Street for, for safety reasons for the fire department. Building materials codes, lighting, all of which would be subject to city code under those conditions. And there is a. Resolution associated with this resolution R twenty two or twenty seven spells out, it's in customer's packets, spells out all the conditions that they wish. This can be allowable under current city code as well as findings back that support this. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't have a question, I want to make a quick comment. The planning commission met last week, the applicant was present, as were a number of residents from that area. And there was good interaction, I think, with the company, with the applicant, with the neighbors, which is exactly how this process should work when you have a hearing. We had all that put on the table, so I thank the applicant for that. That's not exactly relevant to this, but I thought in that way.
Thank you, councilmember Williams, you got a color?
Yes, I noted that you were planning to plant like eighteen trees where.
Yeah, Mr. Hucker?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right, name is John Henry with taking storage group.
I noticed in your plan that you're putting eighteen trees, were they along Court Street, the majority of them, or?
Yeah, so we had said that there was a landscaping plan, so what we actually did, the conditional use permit. We purchased the property obviously from a previous owner who had a master plan for this site that was already approved. And there was a little bit of a landscape plan on there, we did revise it and send it to Mr. Sparks with what he recommended. And I think now he wants instead of twelve trees, eighteen for the code, so the majority of them will be along the residential site.
Okay.
Block screening on there, there's already a burn.
Yeah, it's a burn, will it be on top of the burn?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, I'm not a landscape expert, but I think it's, if I, what I envision is more a half of the burn. You know, I don't know if they're gonna get a little bit staggered, or if they're gonna be like clumps of three, you know, and I would say put things in odd numbers, not even numbers for aesthetics. So yeah, so we're gonna do it more along that for blocking from the outside looking in.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, big one. This time, we will accept any proposals or motions for resolution R twenty twenty two dash zero two seven.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt, that we adopt that resolution, R two zero two two dash two zero two seven.
Thank you, councilmember Crowman. Seconded by councilmember Schlegel. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor, anybody opposed, the ayes have. Moving on to item eight, the building materials ordinance five ninety four first reading.
I'll run with this too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please.
So this will be familiar to. House members. I guess perhaps not too much, councilmember Williams. But this was, this is an issue for, I had that release. They go back to discussions with sideways lumber in building materials for a property that, a building that they wanted to construct on Wolf Street. At that time, planning commission, this was approximately six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, planning commission made a recommendation to council to allow a variance of two hundred percent metal. With, with some findings of fact. And for initial use permit, that was formally denied by city council. And sent back to planning commission with a recommendation that planning commission instead look at adopting ordinance or recommend, recommending ordinance to city council that would directly address the building materials. In the PI, I one and I two zoning districts, and that's what planning commission did. So at planning commission's last meeting, they went specifically into. Into the section of the zoning code and. Upon much discussion over exactly what seems reasonable, what seems doable, what's economical. Came forward with a recommendation to, to council to consider ordinance that would. Make the building material standards in the PI, I one and I two zones the same as each other, which is. Centered twenty five percent average non-metal building materials. So that's on average, on four sides, there would be twenty five percent non-metal on those, on those buildings. Currently, that's the standard in I two, this would simply change P and I and I one to be the same as I two. So the non-metal materials could be stone, some kind of, you know, rain squirting of some form, there are some examples I know in the packet. Any, any buildings in the airport overlay zone would be exempt from this, and there is language in the ordinance to call attention to that, so. And for example, will be exempt from this and could build. Wouldn't have to have a twenty five percent average, because they're going to be a little bit different. But this would make it consistent across the I one, I two and PI districts, and then anyone looking to build in those areas could then submit conditional use permits for construction. According to these new standards, and planning commission wasn't supportive of this, felt the public caring for it. And their recommendation is that council would adopt this ordinance. And so tonight, the action that's requested, it's not even an approval yet, we have to have a first reading of this where. I can certainly read that, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
I would like that.
Read the proposed ordinance, the next meeting would be, unless customer himself would like to read. Second reading would be at the June thirteenth meeting, and then if approved, read up to after that second reading, and the. Ordinance would be published and. Effectively go through it, changing the code itself. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, two questions, but the, the copy we have in our packet does not have the ordinance somewhere. The tax decree ordinance five ninety four, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. City administrator, why can't we just, if we want to, could we waive the reading? Why can't we waive the reading?
If council would choose.
I made the motion that we waive first reading. Thank you, councilmember Schlegel, anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, councilmember Solomon. Mr. Ruby, you want to have to read that, all, all those, any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed, the ayes have. So then, quick question, the second reading, or the second time we read that over, that will be at the June twelfth meeting, June thirteenth, thirteenth. Thank you, the first business meeting. Thank you. Moving on to consideration for community center golf simulator, this is a regular agenda item eight C. Mr. Ruby, you want to?
Do that one of us, please. I would, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's several slides here, I'm not gonna read you absolutely everything in them, a lot of information to share that goes up here. And please feel free to jump in with questions as you have them. Public services director, Rich Kucher, and our recreation manager, Alison Watkins. I would say the rage over behind this, and asked to be here, but I told them to take the night off, so I should be able to answer all of your questions. So i- in the context of the community center itself. I would say on a regular basis, staff are continually evaluating the best uses of that building. Okay. And, and use of the existing space as it stands right now. One of the options that has been looked at for about the last year now has been a, an indoor virtual golf simulation. There are some of these types of. Indoor golf options in the metro area, places like. They're called golf galaxy locations in the metro area that have them, but essentially it's an indoor digital golf experience where you can swing the glove as fast as you like. The ball hits a backdrop which, on which is projected any number of different types of courses, holes, lays. And the surface on which you hit, and the gradation of the surface on which you hit the ball can, can change. The thought behind this is, is we know we have a community that with a fair number of golfers in it. We also have two racquetball courts, I have some numbers up here for racquetball court utilization. We know the courts, two courts currently, which are used both for racquetball and for volleyball. During the year of twenty twenty one, between the two courts, so there were six hundred and fifty total scans for entry. Or two a day, now those also count staff entries, so staff entries for maintenance, things like that. We've seen indoor golf recreation continue to grow in popularity in the, in throughout the Midwest, and it's available for players at all levels of the game. So staff began researching this, like I said, just about a year ago, as an option to better utilize one of our racquetball courts. Way to offer a new recreation activity to our community using the existing space that we have in a non-permanent setting, or with a non-permanent structure. Structure. I do want to call attention to the rec facilities master plan, because I think that's important in the context of this discussion. So rec facilities master plan, of course, was a budget line item that council approved at the end of last year for twenty twenty two's budget. Also for forty thousand dollars to be used for rec facilities master plan. Which would look at, have an outside organization, look at all of our recreation facilities, how we use them, how much money we spend on them. Where the community wants to go with those and where we could potentially be in five, ten, fifteen years down the road. While this master plan is ongoing, understanding that long term, all of this master planning process, we may look at how our facilities are used in the future. This is an opportunity that feels very strongly enhances the current offerings that we have with. Income upside, without modifying too materially the space that we currently have at the community center. This isn't involve any major construction, there is some involvement with regenerating, adding security cameras, enhancing the security out the door itself. But otherwise utilizing the existing space. This specific simulation, which I'll get into in a second. Program was brought to the RPAC meeting at its May third meeting and was recommended for council consideration. The total cost of the unit itself, which is a two, it's called a two vision plus two vision unit from company golf zone. Is estimated at a hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's roughly seventy five, eighty thousand dollars for the unit itself, plus installation. And that's some costs associated with outfitting the room itself, again with, potentially with some additional netting. And security cameras and the security on the door to get in to the, the court itself. There's the option of utilizing a municipal lease, so this would be, instead of, there's some, several options for procuring this type of unit. One option would be utilizing municipal lease, which would be a similar. A similar option to what we use to, to gain the fitness equipment. Was obtained through a three year municipal lease. For which the city paid over the course of three years and has an option of purchasing equipment at the end of year three for one dollar. We are at the end of, we are in year three right now for the fitness equipment, we just made a final payment, she's their final payment, we still owe a dollar. They'll invoice us a dollar, right? How we made our final lease payment, kind of the disequipment, this could be structured in a similar way. So overall, staff broke down the, the cost and the estimated cost on a per day basis, as they tried to revenue stream this was around a hundred and nine dollars per day. If council were to approve this. Building a suggested rate structure based upon their similar indoor golf simulators fall from an hourly basis. Suggested at this time would be non-prime hours of seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, fifty dollars an hour. And evening hours, Monday to Friday, and all weekend hours being prime hours. Again, suggested at this time make sixty dollars per hour. And it's important, I think, to note that it's per hour and not per individual, so if you were to go in with a party of four. For an hour, it would be fifty dollars, not, I'm sixty dollars for time, not per person, to get the hour, as many people as. I should say as many as you want, because we have a policy around that, but it's not per person, per hour, it's used to. And again, non-prime hours and prime hours just based on. Some similar modeling from other indoor golf simulators. The reason the hundred and nine dollars per day is important in the context of the daily rates is that. By selling one non-prime hour and one prime hour per day, that cash flows, the golf simulation, anything above and beyond that. Is net income for the operation. This is an overview of the unit itself. I'm not a golf player myself, but if, if I were, this would. Seem like it has at all, so there are currently twenty six of these units in operation in the country. This is considered the latest generation of indoor golf simulation. Where the swing plate itself can move in the twenty four different positions, so in theory, you could be standing at an elevation higher than the length of your ball. To create some contours that jive with the image that you're seeing on the screen, there are over two hundred courses available. There are speed sensors on the ceiling and from the side. Multiple surfaces that you can hit off of, and. If you were to have anyone else playing at another one of these somewhere else, you can play virtually, much like you can play an online video game, but you can play in real time. With partners using the kiosk that we, in the racquetball court itself. So the, the swing plate, this is just to, to give some comparisons to. Some, some other simulators that are within driving distance. So nearest similar unit is in Woodbury, and has a moving swing plate, so this would be the nearest drivable. Golf simulator with a full play function swing plate. So the goal here would be certainly to cash flow the operation and allow an additional. Recreational activities for our community to use particular golfers in the seasons. Unless you play golf in the rainy snowy months like some individuals. Most people, the golf is limited to just a few months out of the year. This would be operational 365 days a year. The city has also actively in the past tried to. Optimize the use of the community center and optimize revenue generation for the community center. Doing things like hockey tournaments during which. We can get hundreds of fans and families and players in the building. But the optimal revenue generation for the community center itself is extremely limited. So this is an opportunity to not only provide the potential revenue stream for those occasions when there are events. Respect field of the community center or even the high school, but also provide some recreation for those who are in between games or waiting for things like that. I'll take any questions at this time. That was a lot of information in a few slides. So any questions?
Very good. Anybody have any questions for City Administrator Robby?
I have more comments and questions right now. We've got a community center task force. We have the Recreation Facilities Master Plan, which is going to be coming to us in June. Personally, I feel this is kind of putting the cart before the horse before we get any recommendations from the task force. And our master plan proposal. In the last year, we had. The council approved a 17-plus percent levy increase that we couldn't outstanding. We're looking at spending $110,000 discretionary spending on this. But it'd take over 2,300 uses to get the money back on. If we're going to go forward with this, I prefer we do it after the Community Center Task Force and Master Plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleeder. Anybody else have any comments? Councilmember Swanberg?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Schleeder. I think the timing of this is not good. Obviously for the reasons that he stated, as well as this is the golf season right now. I don't think we would see much use until late October, early November. I agree with Councilmember Schleeder that we need to wait on this.
Very good. Anybody else have any comments?
I just wanted to make a comment on whether or not they feel like the staff time would be, what involves the staff time or after hours? They have all that imagined figured out.
That's a good question. From a staff time standpoint during operational hours, it likely wouldn't be a material change. Those who are renting out the room would have access to a unique code that would grant them access to the room in the room only. During evening hours, for example.
If I agree with God about concern about screaming at people before because of some feedback I got about before. Because there'll be a lot of good comments about support. So I think it would be smart to hold up and wait and have it all.
I just want to kind of conclude with, you know, these last several years have been very challenging financially from the community center. And it's been very difficult as we have a pool that's been dry for quite some time, parking lot that's falling apart. But I do want to commend our staff. I want to thank them for thinking out of the box. I know they're looking for ways to get people in the door. They're looking for ways to sell membership. We got to continue to do that. I want to thank them for that. I don't want to discount any of the work they put into this. I do want to let the rest of the council know I do agree with what I've heard so far. Anybody else before we?
I just raised one quick issue. When you mentioned membership. I'm tending to agree that we should, actually there's no motion to adopt it, so we can't have a motion to table it. We just informally say, let's put it off. But I wondered, you mentioned, for example, Mr. Roby, you mentioned. People have come to the community center to attend a hockey tournament or a hockey game. And they may want to use this facility. Would they have to be members to get in or could anybody just come in for this only purpose or have you thought that through? I have no idea.
I would say there's not a formal decision made around that yet, but my initial thought would be that you would not have to be a member to utilize this.
A lot of considerations, I think, for the future, so.
I think there's still a lot of questions about the membership piece. What if you already have a membership? What will that membership entail for you? Does that get you any kind of discount? Could you create some type of membership for the simulator? It will make money if you put it in, but it won't make money in the summer.
You're going to have more uses in the winter to get the average up to those two a day.
Absolutely. And I think it has potential, but I just don't like the timing of it. And to be honest with you, I think for my personal preferences that we would actually make a motion to table it to a later date.
Very good. Motion's been made to table it to a later date. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor?
May I hold it? I'm sorry, I have a concern. Do we even want to say a later date or do we set a date? If later date's kind of vague, that could be next tomorrow. Let's get a little clearer.
Well, I. Yeah, I like the motion for a later date. I'd like to just, just to see what the ARC study or the REC study has to share with us. And we, do we know when that's going to be done?
So that's a good point. We at this time don't have a timeline for completion of that. Once, as soon as council recommends acceptance of the proposal that we have, the staff have received. The staff have some questions on it from the submeter of the proposal. So once council approves that proposal, initiates the process. And reengages the community center task force, there's going to be a lot of elements of seeking public input. I don't have a firm timeline for completion of it, but it's not going to be completed in the next.
Well, that's, with that said, I agree with Councilmember Swanberg. We can't really set a date until we know when that standard is done and we have an opportunity to review that study.
I actually like to offer a friendly amendment. Um, we revise the original amendment to say until we receive the REC study. Okay, we'll revisit this after the REC study results.
Motion's been made and it's been amended to, to review this again after the REC study has been completed. And we've had a chance to review that.
That's fine with me and I agree with you. I don't want to discount the work that's been done because I appreciate the work that has been done. I think it's been good work.
Thank you. With that said, all those in favor. Hi, anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Which takes us into item eight D, La Sura County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Do you want to review that for us, Mr. Robby?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is. So the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires local governments to develop and adopt what's called a multi-hazard mitigation plan. And it's an extensive document that La Sura County, Councilmember Williams is well familiar with this. She was engaged in this process with the county. From a city standpoint, previous city ministry approval and building official and emergency manager Justin Nielsen had engagement in this process. Starting back in 2000, unlikely discussions even before that. But the Department of the University of Minnesota worked with La Sura County using. What began as federal dollars to build the MHMP for La Sura County. It's a long list of hazard assessments for the county. On a municipal level, so you can go into each municipality and it'll rank. Assessment, risk hazard, risk levels for severe heat, severe cold, drought, flood. Fire, severe weather, things like that. And kind of establishes all the parties involved in the development of the plan. A general timeline for how frequently the plan should be revised. In theory, it should be a living document that county municipalities and townships have ownership over as we go forward. It's required to give federal hazard mitigation dollars. That's ultimately why it's important that the county does this. But as a practical document. I see a lot of value in it for us as a city, in particular around emergency management. We have an interim emergency manager at the county, now Tammy Stewie. And our emergency manager, Justin Nielsen and I, we're hoping to meet with her in the next month or two. To do some introductions and, you know, establish some policies and procedures and get an understanding of their policies and procedures. A document like this gives us something to refer to. Again, it will be a living document. So as time goes on, populations change, new industries move in or out. Nature changes, climate changes, things will change in that document, but. In the very detailed. Inventory of potential hazards for our community and the broader county. And so the ask tonight is that council would consider approving resolution R 2022-025. Which supports and adopts the current La Sura County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Ultimately, if council were to decide to adopt this resolution, a concrete signed resolution would be submitted to FEMA along with. This plan and any other city council resolutions supporting it from La Sura County. To FEMA for approval. Once FEMA has approved, as trusting they do, then La Sura County and any municipalities within the county are eligible. Preliminarily for hazard mitigation grant funding that may come through. Are there any questions?
Some questions. The plans are a few pages, isn't it, Michael?
It is. We slide in pretty quickly.
I just wanted to clarify, this is the document that County Administrator Joe Martin and.
Yes.
Requested that I talked to you about.
Yes.
So we're eligible for federal funding.
That's correct.
The only way we'll get that federal.
That's correct. Yeah. So I, I don't know at what point this document was finalized already, but yes, it was sent to me. Be you and then Councilor Schleeder and. Interim Emergency Manager, County Tammy Stewie, also being able to me encouraging me to present it to council for approval.
Okay, well, with that said. Looking for a motion to approve resolution R 2022-025. Second, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember Swanberg. Any comments, concerns, questions? All those in favor? Hi, anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item eight E, the Abdo Finance Services. Administrator Robby, this is out of your wheelhouse of finances, so you can share whatever you can with us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following my approval, City Council's approval of. My hiring as a city administrator on the May 9 meeting. City staff posted a permanent finance director position the following day on May 10. That position closed, posting closed for that yesterday, May 22. Understanding that it had previously been council's general desire and frankly, the desire of staff to. Long-term have a permanent onsite, full-time finance director in-house working for the city of La Sura. The reason that statement, I think, is important just for the general public in context. Is that for a number of years, following some retirements, up until the hiring of former finance directors Zach Dow. The city of La Sura utilized Abdo, formerly Abdo Ica Myers, accounting and consulting firm. To provide and outsource finance director. So for several years, that is the option that the city pursued. To fill the finance director position. City changed course in 2019 and opted to bring that finance director position back in-house on full-time in-house basis. And with hiring of Zach Dow. With the position of finance director currently being open. We will, city staff will complete the normal scoring and interview process for applicants with submitted applications thus far. On an interim basis, given the duties and responsibilities of the finance director position. It's staff recommended, staff recommendation, my recommendation that. That we look to an outsourced finance director position on an interim basis until we build position full-time. In-house for the city. Which includes audit coverage. So the timing of all of this, this transition. Is a little odd in that our audit was scheduled to be, take place during the month of May. In consultation with the city's auditors, Bergen KDB. Their recommendation was that we reach out to a consulting firm such as Abdo and SEEK. And some audit preparation services that just allow the city to be better prepared for its audits. Most of that audit preparation work has already been done, but as you can imagine, there's a high volume of work and intensity when the auditors are here on site. That. We needed dedicated finance director to do that. Abdo was proposed to do that and has also proposed. To provide an interim outsourced finance director for the city of La Sura. The contract for the proposal for the interim outsourced finance director. Was for $800 per month. That's for finance director to provide all the current services that I previously performed as finance director. From quarterly reports. Finally, reporting, initiating the budget process, running the budget processing consultation with me in the personal budget committee. In addition to that, they would like to provide some additional staff, the company resources to finalize our audit and work with our city hours, Bergen KDB. In my view, this is a reasonable proposal. Given the intensity of the audit process and the authority of the new finance director, I think it appropriate to. To pursue some audit services from Abdo in addition to the finance director position. Once the audit prep has concluded, Bergen has completed their audit city finances. Those staff members would, from Abdo, would. Be reassigned outside the city. The interim finance director proposal would run $800 a month, as I mentioned. Through July 31st or whichever point the city has retained a full-time finance director. I would ideally like to see a little bit of transition time when we onboard someone. And so Abdo would be able to work with me to onboard this finance director. So we have two proposals from Abdo. We've worked with them very closely. Again, they provided the service for the city of La Sura for several years before. Brought the service back in-house. I still would like to have an in-house on staff finance director working hands-on with staff. But Abdo does very fine work. They work in a lot of cities. They have some great standard templates, some standard procedures that we can piggyback off of. Frankly. Many of the financial models that the city currently uses that I use as finance director started out as, as Abdo models. Which then the city adopted because they're considered best practice. So there's a lot of knowledge with our, I mean, two days that I think we can take advantage of. So there's a lot of um knowledge with our, I have two dates that I think we can take advantage of in particular as we onboard a new finance director. Without all entertaining questions.
Thank you, Mr. Robie. Um, I just wanna make a comment that Abdo's been a tremendous resource store. Finance department for for years before, like you said, Mr. Dow came aboard and then you came aboard after that. So it's a familiar service to our staff and to our administration. Uh, I I think as we move forward, I think we need to depend on our career resources as you move into a new role. Uh, any other comments or concerns? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the audit rap proposal and also finance director services proposal. So second, you, Mr. Swanberg, and thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ice haven't. Moving on to comments, reports, and items of appreciation. Council members, this is your opportunity to share anything that's going on in the community. Uh, we will start with Councilmember Huntington.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a couple of things I have. I would miss the last meeting, so I just wanted to say congratulations, Mr. Robie, for your. Community administrator. And then I'd like to reach out to the, well, a special thanks to Alliance Club. Uh, they donated fourteen beverage cans at the community center. It looks really nice. So as a renter and a member, it was very nice. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe.
Yes, uh, last Wednesday, May eighteen. Um, the mayor asked me to attend the ribbon cutting at the new mall, Killer and Main. Actually, administrator was also present. Residents there, some of the businesses were there. Um, and then also um individuals from deed. Governmental agency that helped us finance this were present, so that was a celebration. It was basically a very simple ribbon cutting and then they offered a tour, actually before and after for those who attended. We did have an opportunity to look at the apartments upstairs and people always ask in this community, I've heard all kinds of stories about those apartments. They're all occupied. You know, whatever. The answer is, as as of last week, there were two of them that were still available. So I don't know if Mr. Robie wants to add anything to it, but it was a very simple celebration, ribbon cutting. Uh, but I think it was good that our city was represented. I thank the mayor for the opportunity to represent him and each of you and indeed our entire city. Mr. Robie?
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe. And the only thing I would add, I think, uh, to that is um. It was a nice opportunity for some individuals who are involved with the project early on to come back and see it. So we had, for example, two representatives from. Um, Department of Economic, um, employment and economic development for the state of Minnesota who came down, who'd been involved early on with. For community development director, San Di Maggio, who we're excited to see. We got so late on this. Um, and yeah, very excited and and. Well, I go with Councilmember Program and said, it's nice to see it open. I'm happy to see that mostly apartments are occupied. Um, from being rented out. I personally heard positive feedback from two of the tenants of the apartments. Um, and to hear uh some some uh very positive words come from uh some of the tenants on the first floor is really terrific. You know, some of those businesses that had never literally seen the light of day. Being on the second floor for as many years as they as they were, finally having abundant sunshine. Is bringing, you know, a lot of joy to their their practice and a lot of pride in their operations. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Schleter.
Uh, I was thinking redevelopment authority meeting that was originally scheduled for Wednesday, May eighteenth. It's been rescheduled for Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. La Sura County officials meeting for this month has been canceled due to a lack of a venue and we're gonna resume meetings since September. And it's we sort of turned the host, so I'm gonna need to work with the city administrator and the air on. Getting that set up for September.
Very good. Councilmember Sullivan.
Uh, the only thing I have to report tonight is uh, training the meeting that we had two weeks ago. We did have discussion about grants for. Two electric buses that we're looking at, so possibly one for La Sura, one for St. Peter. So that's possibly something kind of our way.
Electric bus is interesting. Um, Councilmember Swanberg?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Uh, just wanted to hear about the Rotary, um, legislature meeting back on, I think, the seventeenth. I'm not sure if that's the date. Anyway, they were talking about the sound system, you know, count or whatever system downtown. Plan to work with the city personnel to review what possibly could take place. At the end of blocks of Main Street, north and south of Bridge. So um, a lot of great ideas that the logistics is to yet to be worked out.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe and himself were also there, um, but you summarized it very well. Thank you very much.
If I may add real quickly, I think part of the idea that meeting too was to get other. Community organizations involved, so Lions were represented. And so it's not just Rotary that's doing it. They were just organizing that meeting. So it's again, our community in action together, which is really wonderful.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll end with um just simply, I'm gonna thank Officer Felt again tonight for introducing himself. We want to walk into your by community and. Mr. Robie, uh, wonderful job tonight as your first uh meeting as our city administrator. You did really well, so thank you. With that, I can entertain a motion to close the meeting. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?